We're going to hear about our Climate Action Plan and our update. Take it away, Nancy.
Thank you. Hi. Good evening, everybody. Almost say good morning. Feel that fresh.
Wow.
So I'm here to give you an update on where we stand with our Climate Action Plan and the goals within it. And the Climate Action Plan was developed in 2008. And the goal was set at 25% reduction of greenhouse gas emissions by 2020, based on a 2004-2005 baseline. It addresses programs and measures for the city to take in its own operations and also for -- to be done community-wide. And it measures greenhouse gas emissions resulting from energy use, transportation, water use, and solid waste. We don't have a lot of data on water, so I won't have a lot more to say about that. And it is a small contributor because it's mostly about the energy used to move the water. So Emeryville, with its beautiful green lawn, which may not be green for that much longer, has a reputation in the area as a leader, and really beyond the area, as a leader in green programs and green infrastructure. And our leadership here within the city and regionally has resulted in substantial improvements in our greenhouse gas emissions. In addition, the fact that we have this reputation attracts businesses and residents who share that -- those values. And so the situation improves upon itself naturally. All right. Since 2008, and before, of course, but since the Climate Action Plan was put in, we've done a lot of things. We're currently -- for energy, we're doing upgrades. We've done energy upgrades at city-owned facilities, including solar panels in two facilities with two more -- three more planned, and upgrades to streetlights, traffic signals. The police station, when it was redone, got LEED certification. And we have worked -- am I not near enough?
Closer.
Nobody's ever accused me of not being loud enough.
Just be closer to them.
Thank you. Okay. And we provided outreach to residents and businesses on energy use and energy efficiency. We've also, along with everyone else, reduced permit costs for solar installations. So we've done that for energy. For recycling, composting, and waste, we have multi-stream recycling citywide. So we have compostables, recyclables, and trash. And we do a lot of outreach and education with residents. And we have an eco-foodware ordinance that we were early adopters on that has reduced a lot of the polystyrene, the plastic, and really persistent plastic that create a lot of emissions when they're made and create a lot of trash and pollution when they're disposed of. In transportation, we've done an awful lot. We support the Emery Go-Round, which reached almost 1.7 million passengers last year. We do a lot of planning for transit-oriented development. Charlie here knows how much is done.
I'm a row.
We do regional transit coordination. E-bots was a big effort, a lot of transit coordination and planning and advocacy. We have the Safe Routes to School and Safe Routes to Transit projects that are done or mostly done. We have some hybrid vehicles for staff use. And we were named the most walkable city in the East Bay last year. So in transportation, still talking about transportation, you'll see it's a big -- there's a lot to talk about. We've done a lot of pedestrian and bicycle improvements. We have an award-winning pedestrian bicycle plan. We have a lot of infrastructure, racks, parking, lockers, Greenway, boulevards, signal sensing. And we have a requirement in our planning process for bike parking since 2008. You need long-term and short-term bike parking. And we don't have ongoing counts for bikes on a daily basis, but we do count them every year on Bike-to-Work Day. And you can see here, this chart shows the green is total bikes that we've counted, which has gone up almost 1,700%.
That's a pretty steep line there.
It's a really steep line. We do count at more spots than we used to. So the red line shows counts of comparable spots. So it's still a pretty steep line, even if you're only counting at the same spots. So that's part of the -- we're both participating in and helping to cause the regional growth in bike commuting and bike use. In addition, we've got green building standards and green business program. And we've got 23 LEED-certified buildings in Emeryville and 25 Emeryville businesses certified as Bay Area green businesses. So, you know, we do have a community here that's working on this. And for instance, IKEA's putting their -- you probably all know all about this, but it's their first in the world fuel cell power source at their Emeryville store. So again, we're the type of community in which you do that. For urban greening, we were leaders in the adoption of a vegetated stormwater management ordinance and water-efficient landscape ordinance using bay-friendly landscaping practices. We've got nearly 4,000 street trees out there, street and park trees, and that's an 18.5% increase.
Nice to see.
Yeah, in the last 10 years. We're also starting already to do climate change adaptation. And we're -- we've cut back, as of last summer, we cut back our water use in our irrigation, and we're cutting it back even further now this spring with the governor's new mandate. Water use and conservation are not captured in the measures that lead to the goal, but they're still good for the planet, good for the community, and improve quality of life for everyone. So they're worth mentioning. So to measure progress, we -- everything's measured in CO2e or CO2-equivalent. Carbon dioxide is only one of six gases that are understood to comprise the greenhouse gases. It is by far the most prevalent one. It is also one of the ones with the least capacity to heat the atmosphere. So all the other ones are normalized to a CO2-equivalent measure. So we have them all rolled in in our CO2e. If we were -- if, say, there were emissions of sulfur hexafluoride, that would be 23,900 tons per ton, you know, of CO2 emissions. I didn't say that right. Do you know what I mean?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, but can you explain why everything goes to carbon dioxide equivalent? Why not methane or some other?
Because we have to do less math because most of it is CO2.
Okay.
So you don't have to make much adjustment. If you had to adjust all the CO2, you'd be doing more math.
I see.
Yeah. That's really it. You could just pick any one, but that's the one. So, and here's some hard truth. This is where we have gotten in our CO2e emissions. The green line's our goal, considering, you know, a steady progress toward our goal. The blue line is our emissions. And the gray dotted line is the forecast for where we'll end up at 2020. And you'll see there's a big gap. It does not look like we're going to get to that goal. And backing up, we'll talk about how to think about that and maybe, you know, ideas. So going back, we were one of the first -- we were in the first 15%, say, of climate action plans adopted in California. Most of them were adopted after ours. And we have learned some things about it. Everyone, there are some things that are standard and many things that are not about how you assume what your goals will be, what measures you'll use, and what way you'll look at them. And I think there've been some lessons learned since we got on the bus early that we can think about going forward. At least, even if we don't meet our goal, we can at least track our progress in a way that's meaningful. All right. How are our neighbors progressing toward the goals? Berkeley, we all have different baselines, baseline years, but Berkeley has gotten 8% of the way toward -- well, they have a 25% goal as well. They have 8% reduction. San Francisco's doing really well. They've got a 14.5% reduction. We've only got a 1.33% reduction. But look at the next slide. Look at the population growth. This is not accounted for in our measures. We've had a 35, almost 36% population growth in the last 10 years compared to a lot less than half of that rate in the other two cities. If you then do a per capita reduction rate, our per capita reduction in greenhouse gases is 18%. And that's better than either of the other municipalities are doing. So the fact that we're small and that we're growing is making this measure harder and harder to reach. The data that we use are -- they're national standards and about what data are used and how they're collected and expressed. And it's just as much kind of mumbo jumbo behind the scenes as any other data. You know, you make assumptions and you use those. And as long as you use them consistently, you get measures that show real change. But you've made a bunch of assumptions. Measures include, as I said, emissions from energy use, transportation, and solid waste. There are lots of things that play into these measures that are out of our control. PG&E's energy mix, it's much -- they've got a goal of 30% renewables by 2020. And they've been -- they came up from 12% renewables to now they're at 19% renewables. And that means that our energy is cleaner. And we, you know, the same activity produces less greenhouse gas emissions. Same amount of electricity used has less emissions because the energy is cleaner. We have methane collection at the local landfill now at Altamont that made a huge difference in the emissions from our solid waste because it's captured and used to fuel the trucks, the fuel efficiency of vehicles. As that changes, it goes up and down. That affects -- and freeway traffic loads and through trips are a big part of our transportation numbers. And they're not very sensitive to what we do here. Some categories of data are more specific and more reliable. The energy data is really good. PG&E gives us very specific data, especially for residences. They give us a little more aggregated data, but it's Emeryville-specific for commercial. Solid waste is decent. The tonnage amounts are specific to us, to our -- the amount of waste that's going off. But they make assumptions about the mix of the waste that is doesn't -- is not Emeryville-specific. So that's not -- it doesn't reflect our waste perfectly. Transportation is the one, the measure that is the least sensitive. It's a share of the region's transportation. So their vehicle miles traveled regionally, and we get a share of that assigned to us. So that even if we all stopped using vehicles, our -- the data would move 2% overall, and we'd get a 2% share of that, and it would show like 0.4%, you know? It wouldn't make a real dent in the data. So the data for transportation are particularly problematic in terms of what we do and how it affects the numbers. So just back to the issue of per capita, this is -- these are the total numbers of what we've -- what our greenhouse gas emissions over time. 2004, we had a total of 178,000 tons. We're now at 176,000 tons. That's that 1.33% improvement that I talked about. It's not very impressive. If you, again, if you do it by per capita, the emissions have gone down 27.19% so far in the last 10 years on a per capita basis. If we were to try to -- if we were to meet our goal of 25% reduction in total emissions with projected population change, that would represent a 61% decrease in admissions per capita. It's a much more aggressive goal than I think was really contemplated at the time. We have just five years to make that goal. So here again, this is this slide that made everyone sad. Now, if you look at this, instead of a total, if you look at this in per capita, you can see the trend is much better. We're still not quite on target. So there's more to do. Another thing that I don't think I've got a slide on, but I want to talk about is the per capita number -- maybe I do have a slide on it. But the per capita number that I'm using is just residents. And our residential, our population goes up 300% during the day. Most other cities, San Francisco goes up 20% during the day. We go up 300% during the day. So even using a per capita number that's residents-only is still a blunt instrument. Doesn't really get us there. So lessons learned include, do we want to use more specific metrics? We want to -- we may want to adjust some measures to take the things that are out of our control out of the measures. We may want to use more specific denominators to measure commercial energy against daytime population, residential energy against nighttime population, transportation against daytime operation. That's population. Traffic on Interstate 80. Okay, so in the county of Alameda, the MTC has estimated that 58% of the traffic, of the miles traveled, is on freeways. I think it's probably higher here, but let's say it's 58%. That's a big chunk that we can never touch. We can't really touch that. If we were to, you know, reduce all of our vehicle trips here in town, we'd still have 58% of the transportation showing there. And we're never going to reduce all. We're not going to be a walking town completely. This is the trends by sector. The top line there is transportation. And you can see that the solid line is where we've come. And the dotted line shows where we would need to go to get to the goal. For transportation, that's a super steep line. Commercial energy is a steep line, much less so. And then down at the bottom, residential energy and solid waste, they have a small portion of the emissions, and we're much closer to the goal for those. If you were to subtract the 58% of freeway traffic, this is what it would look like. In either case, you can see that those top two are where we should be focusing because they're the largest and they're the furthest off their goals, and so we have the most opportunity up there. Same kind of data here, just presented a little differently. Transportation, overall emissions have gone up in the past 10 years. Commercial energy has gone down. Residential energy's gone up a little, and solid waste has gone down. That's in the face of a lot of growth. This is the same numbers with the freeway taken out. Thinking about transportation, one thing we can look at is how do Emeryville residents behave? And how do people who commute in behave in terms of transportation? And Emeryville residents are really good at not driving alone to work. This is commute mode. They don't drive alone to work as much as the average in the Bay Area, and they use transit a lot more. So I think that's -- gives credit to not only our location, but our transit-oriented planning, where we make -- the Emery Go-Round makes it easy for people and our proximity to other transit routes. People choose transit when they live here. Not so for the people who come in from out of town.
We have the highest walking as well.
We have the highest walking, yeah. And we're most walkable city. Yeah. No, our residents are doing really well. So what we want to try addressing is the people who come in, which is twice the number of the residents, and they're driving in a lot. So we have some ideas. We can think of ideas about how to address that. But that's another place we can possibly make some good progress. The emissions from energy have gone down in recent years. That's in the face, again, of growth. This is particularly meaningful because it's very specific to Emeryville. The data are specific to Emeryville. PG&E's green energy mix, energy codes that are coming in, and just the availability of better appliances and better lights and lamps, and that's contributing to that. But we're -- if we were looking at this from a per capita standpoint, we're almost a 36% improvement there, reduction. We're at 12.78 just on raw numbers. That's pretty good, given all the growth. Commercial users use 87% of our energy. Residential use is only 13%. And Maurice was reminding me that Novartis is not even online. So they come back on with their big research facility, or it's -- I think it's still Novartis, the big one.
Griffles.
That'll --
Griffles.
Griffles.
Yeah.
But isn't -- well, Griffles? All right, Griffles. They'll -- that'll jump even more. That percentage will go up. Overall, total energy use in the city has gone down by 0.7%.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. So efficiency, and people see the dollars and cents of that, and we've got programs that do outreach and help people take advantage of PG&E's programs. Residential use has gone up by 20% since 2005, but the average use per household has gone down. So it's another place you see the growth reflected. Each household is using less, but the town is using more because we have more people. Commercial has also gone down by 1.7% since 2005. This is, according to PG&E, these are the top 80% of electricity users in Emeryville, are offices, biotech, high-tech, hospitality, and other. So when we think about commercial energy programs and outreach or incentives or requirements, these are the sectors we should look at for the most bang for our buck. So how should we proceed? Emeryville won't come close to meeting our goal at the current rate. We are planning more actions, and we'll continue to work on what we have been working on and add programs. I've been ramping up already on energy involvement because I think that is a place we can make some improvements. But even the measures that don't show, even if we didn't reach 25%, we are making progress. And the measures that don't count, all those transportation measures that don't really show in the data, they still have benefits. Their quality of life, air quality, safety of the streets, all of those things are real, and they are meaningful. So some things we can do, we can look at in terms of measuring our progress, we can look at data measures. We can keep the goal, if we want, as an aspirational goal, as it is. We can also break down, and as I said, look at different denominators, look at the data in ways that bring out more information for us. We can do, these are programs that we're planning or have been proposed already, energy improvements to City Hall for HVAC repairs and a full lighting retrofit. The lighting retrofit will save us 15 tons of CO2 annually. This possibility of participating in a strategic energy planning process. We have the City Hall-based Bike Share program rolling out next month. I don't know if you've seen that, but Bike Share for city employees going to meetings around town. I know we're looking at installing electric car chargers here and expanding our alternative fuel vehicle fleet. We're planning LED streetlight updates, upgrades, and energy upgrades at the senior center and Fire Station 34 as the renovations go on at those two places. We also, for community-wide, we're participating, I'm working a lot of time, spending a lot of time on trying to get this, our part of the regional Bike Share program, off the ground. That's scheduled to roll out in 2016 and have full implementation in 2017. I think that's a very aggressive goal, too. So we'll see how that works out. But still in the process politically, but it looks like it'll happen, and it looks like we're in. I'm already planning outreach to multifamilies, buildings for energy, and looking for opportunities for the commercial energy sector. Two areas stand out, as I've said, for the highest opportunity for progress. Drive-alone commutes into Emeryville and commercial energy use. We've got a lot of ideas, and I'm open to more, about drive-alone commuting, transportation planning, which we're already doing, limit parking, charge for parking, do traffic calming, transit-oriented development, which we already do, support for expansion of transit, which people are working on here, new initiatives like Bike Share, and Vision Zero is a concept. Vision Zero is the concept that life and health cannot be traded for any benefit, any monetary benefit. And so all transportation planning should be done with that goal in mind, zero traffic fatalities, and even if it makes it slower. So that's kind of the pie-in-the-sky goal. That's not necessarily a practical goal on today, but something to think about. For commercial energy, we might consider a building energy savings ordinance, which would require energy audits at certain periods of time, or a commercial energy conservation ordinance, which would require a time of sale. We might consider energy rebates and incentives. And as I was talking with Maurice earlier, we think the commercial community has been doing a lot to improve their energy use. So we don't want to get punitive necessarily. We want to help them. They already value it, judging by the numbers. We could require existing buildings to get some sort of LEED or Build It Green or other kind of certification. We could require them to label their energy use, like a refrigerator when you buy it, put it on the outside of the building. How much energy does this building use? And participation in the community choice aggregation process could help us affect the energy mix, how green it is.
And Councilmember Martinez is serving on the county.
Yes. I talked towards the shoreline the other day, so I'm glad about that. So let me show you what we're working on. I'll try and do this quickly. We in Environmental Programs, that's me and Marcy Greenhut, we work on programs that meet regulatory requirements. That's a driver of 63.5% of what we do, roughly.
A half.
The things that we work on impact the greenhouse gas measures as they're currently measured, 40%. But 97% of what we do affects greenhouse gas emissions, whether they're measured or not. And I'll just show you the categories. This is kind of what we brainstormed, how we spend our time. That's staff time percent. Waste takes a lot of our time, and it's mandated. Bike walk transit, you know, you can see down the line. Those are the things that are mandated. Waste, stormwater, landscape and water use, and hazardous materials in the sign ordinance, which is a tiny part. These are the parts that show in the existing measures. You can see why maybe we're doing a lot that's not showing. And these are the ones that actually do impact emissions or carbon uptake. So again, it's sort of a reality check on the numbers. They don't tell the whole story. So what do we do now? Going forward, we have to determine how to define and meet our goals. We have to prioritize our efforts. We have to innovate and adjust. We have to leverage the city opportunity and effort. And what I'm recommending is that we develop a work plan to accomplish this in the new Sustainability Committee. And that's all I've got.
Could we ask questions?
Sure.
Absolutely. Scott?
I did a little view of Emeryville from Google Earth recently, and I was looking for the amount of solar in our city just by looking at rooftops. And of course, I saw right over City Hall here. I saw our solar, and the biggest solar looks like it's over IKEA. And there's just not that much elsewhere in our city. And we have some real intensive users in Novartis and Griffles coming up. And their roofs are just crowded with equipment, whereas we have warehouses surrounding them that have empty roofs potentially that could feed their energy use with solar. If we had some ordinance that allowed solar generators of power to transmit property through property line without going through PG&E, this might really help out our commercial energy use because I think companies that have intensive use, that don't have energy use, because I think companies that have intensive use that don't have the roof could literally pay for their power with helping to pay for panels on adjacent warehouse roofs.
Yeah. I think, I think the solar opportunity is a really, is a juicy one, and that we probably can find incentives and rebates. I don't know about the technicality of PG&E allowing what they will and won't allow, but they have been moving on that. Used to be they, they wouldn't let you generate more than a certain percentage of your use. Now that's, you can generate more, so that is definitely something that would be worth looking into. I agree.
Any other comments or questions? Yeah.
Thank you.
Very much. That was an excellent report.
Thank you.
And it really says to me, you know, back in 2008 when we worked to put this together, it was a very difficult task, and quite frankly, we were kind of going blind. We, we didn't really know what we were doing. It appears to me that staff has worked in a direction where we've really used our resources of time and energy and money of focusing on those areas that we can change. However, there's a big elephant in the room, and that elephant is I-80 and the enormous amounts of CO2 that is generated by the quarter of a million cars a day that are going by there. I would suggest that, that we direct as a council, the new sustainable ability, sustainability committee, to really take a look at this and focus on what we can do, what will, which we have been doing. We're a very pragmatic city.
How to measure what we can do.
Exactly. And the statistics don't back us up. It's overweight by the big elephant sitting on the scale. We've got to somehow carve that out and say, this is this, we can do very little about this, but this is where we're, we're putting our efforts. And design the target based on that. There's not too much you can do about I-80, but we have an infinite number of things that we can do here with our transportation coming into the city, as the mayor says, parking, the bicycle plans, things like that. We have an opportunity now. It's been seven years. It's time to take a fresh look at this, get a document. You're already doing the, the work, and very good work it is, but the numbers don't reflect it.
Yeah.
So, let's, it, it, does everybody agree with this or not?
Yes.
Okay. Because you all, Maurice, your, your group has done a wonderful job here. I'd especially like to focus on the job that you have done with waste management and what we've done with that type of thing. So, that would be my suggestion to the council going forward, that we direct the sustainability committee to come up with a document that clearly reflects what we are doing and what, what we hope to achieve within those parameters.
Yeah. I thank you. And I just want to say, I've only been here eight months, so we got to thank Karen for her work on the franchise agreement and Marcy for her work day-to-day.
Absolutely.
And of course, Peter Schultz Allen for all he did for all those years, setting all this up.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. I just, I, I just want to kind of underscore a couple of things that stood out for me. Vision Zero may sound like it's not pragmatic, but New York, San Francisco, and Portland have all been looking at it, and so it's something that I'm, I'm definitely interested in, and I'm, I was glad to see it up there. Also, the metric that you showed with people driving into work in Emeryville has great concern to me, and I do hope that we focus on that in the work plan. One of the things that was on, on the list, and I don't know if I just wasn't listening carefully enough, or if you could tell me a little bit more, is in terms of energy audits of commercial properties, how does that work? How often are those properties audited? What kind of incentives are there around those audits?
There's, that's, that's, it's a very timely question. I know Berkeley is, has just approved their BESO. It's not a kiss, it's a, it's a Building Energy Standards Ordinance. They, they have a phase in, anybody, by the end of this year, anybody doing a sale or renovation over $50,000 would have to do it. And then it's phased in with more frequently for larger facilities. So, it's, I think, I think the most frequent is every five years. And then it's like eight years and 10 years or something, depending on the size. And single-family homes are exempted, except when they're sold.
Okay.
And I don't know, I mean, I think the market has to determine what that's going to cost. I know there was some talk of it for a single-family home costing in the few hundred-dollar range. Of course, I think single-family homes have a whole nother challenge where, you know, you could make someone pay $300 to tell, for someone to tell them that if they spent $1,000, they could save money, but they didn't even have the 300, you know?
Right.
So, but for commercial, it makes sense because usually it'll pencil out.
Right.
And they have more capital generally.
Uh-huh.
So, that's something we could look at, and we could certainly, Berkeley just fought those wars, so we could learn a lot from them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Nancy. Any other?
I just wanted to thank you for preparing a very good report and co-sign onto Vision Zero as a, a good way to think about how we're going to form the work plan for our sustainability committee. And I also just wanted to also highlight, Jack mentioned it, but single occupancy vehicles coming into Emeryville, for those people who are just tuning in now or who walked in late, Emeryville residents are doing great at taking transit and walking to work and taking bikes to work. But our workers, our workforce, and as Nancy mentioned, our population goes up by 300 percent during the daytime. We are really failing at having our workers find alternate modes rather than one person alone driving in their car to get here and park here in Emeryville. So, I think that's a, a really good thing to attack, even if it doesn't move our numbers per our current client, climate action plan.
Right. Thank you.
So, I'll, I'll just add my thanks to, to your work in pulling this report together and your work that you do every day. The, and also your own assessment to focus on commercial in particular. And maybe if we go with CCA, that'll help with the mix and use more renewables anyway than what, PG&E isn't moving very fast in, in that direction. And one idea, the council's going to have a joint meeting with the planning commission to look at our density bonus system and some other things. And I will signal now a couple of ideas that I'm going to give at that meeting, which is that to get bonuses, people have to build buildings that are carbon neutral. And that, that would be a way, if, if there's zero impact in terms of greenhouse gas emissions, that would be, they could get rewarded for doing that. And then the other idea is it would be good for us to, and I don't know how you do that, quantify the number, the amount of CO2 that our street trees are sucking up.
Yeah. I think that's doable, actually. You know, we could do it in a more delicate way with, by species, or we could probably do it in a broader way, just by number, and deciduous versus evergreen kind of thing.
So, I would be interested in seeing that, that particular statistic and to say, well, our 4,000 trees are reducing greenhouse gas emissions by X amount. And then the other thing is, we may need to tweak our urban forestry ordinance so that whenever a street tree is removed, that, and a new tree is planted, that tree does not take as much carbon out of the atmosphere because they're younger and smaller. And so, either to plant more trees than on one-to-one replacement value, or to do carbon offsets, bicarbon offsets for that, or something else. So, those are some of the things I'm going to be suggesting at our, at our joint meeting.
Okay. Sounds interesting.
Okay. So, if there's no other comments? All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Study sessions adjourned.